Well, the bell is tolled, so I assume we need to open this meeting. Can I get a notice that everyone's here with your name, please?
Yeah, Carlino, aye.
John Renier, aye.
David Consolati, aye. Our first order of business is a public hearing for a special permit.
The minutes first, Dave, and then we can, we won't forget about them.
All right, yep, I missed that, yep. Can I get the open session minutes of April 6, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye, Pat Carlino, aye.
John Renier, aye.
David Consolati, aye. Okay. Next, we're moving to a special permit hearing. Application from Ann Doyle Dealy to grant a special permit to allow for the conversion of property at 218 Main Street. Lee, from the existing use of three apartments and an office space to a five apartment residential building with no office space. The structure is proposed to be substantially unaltered with the existing utilities utilized, existing parking lot paved area to be subsequently the same. All will be in the existing footprint of the building under Chapter 199, Special Permit 13.4, and Multi-Dwelling Development 9.2 Site Plan Review. The building is located at 218 Main Street in the DCBC zoning district designated map 12A Lot 163. And I will state for the record that I work with Mr. Wickham, so therefore I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion. And Mrs. Carlino will deal with this.
Okay. So basically, this was sent to us, well, by the planning board who has already done the site review. And I think you have, I think we got a notice from the planning board. I'll say, I think I got that.
Do you want me to read that, Patty?
You have it, Sean?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
From the planning board, this is what regarding the 218 Main Street. At Planning Board's meeting on April 12, 2021, the board discussed the special permit application for renovations at 218 Main Street. Planning Board recommended that the applicant submit a parking plan showing sufficient parking and the location and enclosure of the dumpster. Respectively submitted Elizabeth Mead, Land Use Assistant.
Thank you, I found it. So basically, did you say Tom is here tonight? On Zoom? Chris?
Can you hear me? I'm right here.
Oh, okay.
We can hear you.
So pretty basically, and we got a layout of everything, and I was on the Zoom call for the planning board too, so I listened to most of it, but, so I think Tom, although, actually personally, I think it's a great use for that house. There's going to be nothing changed on the outside, it'll look the same as it does now. We're always talking about downtown rental properties, and this will give us two more downtown rental properties. It's only because she's moving to a five apartment that it comes to us rather than the planning board. So I guess all we'd want to see, Tom, is what you did with the parking plan and the dumpster enclosure. That's what I'm getting.
Yeah, so we talked to the owner, there's 75 feet there, they're more than happy to line the parking lot for five lots. They'll do that right away. There's extra room for extra parking and the screening in the dumpster is no problem, they've agreed to that. They said that's no problem at all.
Okay.
So they have plenty, they have some off-street parking available too, but there's plenty of room to put five lines in there, they'll line the parking lot right away to the building inspector's specification if she wants it left or right.
Is that right back of the building?
It is, it's kind of a shared parking lot with Lee Oil. So a parking spot is nine by 18, so she needs 45 feet for five spots, so that she has 72 feet there. So there's plenty of, plenty of room for parking, one for each apartment.
Right, I mean, I think that's fine, I just, I didn't want to count on Main Street parking.
No, we just showed her for visitor, visitor parking, it has plenty of visitor parking to that place, too.
I'm all right with that. Sean?
Yeah, no, everything looks good to me, I don't have any questions or issues, it sounds like a good plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think keep it in character with the town, not do any outside works to the building, it's a beautiful architecturally nice building for the town, so I was happy about that.
Are there any questions from the public?
I don't see any hands.
Then I guess I would entertain a motion.
Pat, before you do that, I'm looking at this, and not that I should be involved, but there's a motion to waive strict site requirements?
Oh, those are the first two, yeah, so go back up to that, so. So we have to make a motion to waive, I'll make a motion to waive strict site requirements?
I'll second that.
Do we have to have discussion about that? Anyone?
What would be, what are we talking about, strict requirements?
Well, it was a tool used by the planning board to facilitate businesses a little easier, let's say a meow and grow on Main Street, we keep saying the same store on Main Street, so we don't need all the water regulations and everything with the store, we already know the store, so it's a way for, to facilitate businesses. Especially existing businesses, like it already has three apartments, a landscaper and everything else. Sometimes you can, you can make people do landscaping work and some and things like that, especially new businesses.
So, all right, but we're talking rental properties, we're not talking businesses anyways.
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's a business, but...
Yes, and so the first thing you do is just waive the strict site plan requirement, there's quite an extensive list in there, even water runoff regulations and everything else like this, so, I mean, the building's been there 100 years.
Right. Okay, yeah, did you make that motion, Sean?
Yeah, I think so.
I'll second it. All in favor?
John Renier, aye.
Pat Carlino, aye. Okay. So then, in regards to our issuing special permit, we need to...
Still one motion to accept.
Yeah, one more play.
We'll have to, we'll have to make, I'll make a motion to accept the site plan as received, and then we'll do the five findings afterwards.
All right, so, second. All those in favor?
John Renier, aye.
Pat Carlino, aye. So, do you want to do each finding individually, or?
Sure, I have them in front of me, you have them in front of you?
I do, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, so, first finding that it is in compliance with all provisions and requirements of this chapter and in harmony with its general intent and purpose, and I was going to say because the plan, the plans show it to be so.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add to that?
No, I agree, so.
Second finding is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare at the proposed location because, yeah, because there's a need for housing. Three, will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or to established or future character of the neighborhood because there's already existing rental units in the building.
I agree.
Four, will not create undue traffic congestion or undue, unduly impair pedestrian safety because the parking is adequate and it's, you know, in the behind the building, not on the street front, so it wouldn't impair pedestrian traffic. And then five, will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal facility to such an extent that the proposed use or any existing use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to the hazards affecting public health, safety, or general welfare.
I agree with that, too.
Yeah, because, well, because there's no substantial increase for any of that, right, to any of that, so.
Okay, so...
So we can make those five findings, and we already voted to accept the site plan.
Okay, so are we all up to vote, or do I have to second anything at this point?
You need to vote to accept.
Okay. My motion, we vote to accept it with the findings as stated.
Second that motion?
All in favor? No public, right, Chris? Okay.
There are, no hands up.
Okay, all in favor?
John Renier, aye.
Pat Carlino, aye.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Okay, have a good night.
Yep.
All right, the next one we have is Town of Lee proclamation, the oldest resident of the Town of Lee. That's pretty amazing, let me see if I can... Right here, hold on one sec. The proclamation states that where is Barbara F. Broderick was born on April 22, 1913. And where is Barbara at age of 108 is the older resident of the Town of Lee, and where as we wish you a very happy birthday. Now therefore be it resolved that I, David J. Consolati, Chairman of the Select Board of Lee, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2021 to be Barbara F. Broderick Day in Lee, Massachusetts. Given under my hand and the seal of the Town of Lee, the 20th day of April, 2021. Happy birthday and God bless you.
Congratulations, I've had lunch with Barbara a number of times when my mother-in-law lived up there, and she's a very, very nice and very intelligent person, too. And obviously, very healthy.
At 108? Yeah, I guess so.
So congratulations.
Yes, happy birthday, Barbara, we wish you the best.
So next, we have Gail Sriesi for Article for Bylaw 172 Amendment. Is Gail online?
That's Mr. Chair, she is, and Gail, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. Gail, if you're with us, go ahead and unmute yourself. Did you see her name there, Mr. Chair?
No, I do not.
No, I see her name as being in attendance.
Well, why don't we move down the list and see if she can get connected? The next one we have is common victory license for Lucky's Ice Cream. Number pro tonk, which means we've already approved this, so they could open up, and we just need to approve it in in this day and age. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I assume no, so therefore, anybody in favor, all in favor?
Pat Carlino, aye.
John Renier, aye.
David Consolati, aye. Next, Christopher, whenever she gets on, let me know, and I'll go back for her. Next, we have Berkshire Health Systems Blood Mobile Promotion. Says our Blood Mobile is doing a promotion this summer called Town Hall Tour. We'll try to go to every town hall in Berkshire County. We're hoping you would be able to host our Blood Mobile, and all we need is a place to park. We will do all the advertising promotions and signups. I really think this would be a very positive event for our communities, and would like to participate.
Well, I think it's a wonderful idea, and I think they've been here in the past. I would just like, I would like to be able just to have Cindy get in touch with this person, and I think in the past, they've parked in the Lee Bank parking lot, but I guess there's no reason they couldn't park in the Price Chopper parking lot this year.
Yeah. Or in the park here, I don't think it's a big deal. I think it'd be nice to have it right here and get every space we can get.
Right. So, do we have to vote on it, or can we just agree that we...
I think we should just give them a vote, saying we will accept them.
Okay. Sean, do you have any question?
No, I concur with everything, I'll make a motion to approve the Blood Mobile.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Pat Carlino, aye.
Sean Renier, aye.
David Consolati, aye.
Mr. Chair, it looks like Gail is joining us now, so can you hear us, Gail?
Yes, sorry.
How you doing, Gail?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Beautiful day.
What are we looking at?
Oh, okay, so I submitted, sorry about the cat. I submitted a citizen's petition for a bylaw amendment, and there was 20 signatures. And I was hoping to get it on for this upcoming meeting with the representatives. So, I did go online, and it said there was a 35-day period that had to happen before the meeting or the election, either one, and so I thought I wouldn't be too late. And that's why I'm here tonight, to see if you guys will put it on the warrant. And I'm here for, and I would like to also show you a picture. Can you see this?
I have no...
You'll have to, you'll have to turn your video on, Gail.
Oh, sorry, start video, okay. There we go, okay, that's why I'm not there, okay. All right, so, can you read this, or is it...
No.
We all got it in our packet, Gail.
Okay, well, I wanted, I wanted whoever is, whoever is here to be able to see it, but I guess you can't do that. Is there a way you guys can share that?
Share what you just said?
Yeah, yeah, the petition, I just wanted it to be on the the public meeting, so people know that it's here.
Okay.
Anyway, so anyway, I know that, I know that Chris Britton was able to share, you know, a screen, and they can bring things up, I don't know. I just, you know, I'm just about as good at this technology as you guys are, so maybe Sean's a little better, but I'm saying generation, so anyway. Excuse me, so there's a slight change, the original bylaw is Chapter 172, and it refers to solid waste, but then when you go down, there's an Article 1 radioactive waste, and it has prohibited uses. And no land within any use district in the town may be used for collection, treatment, storage, burial, incineration, or disposal of radioactive waste, including but not limited to waste classified as low-level and radioactive waste. So the petition is to ask the town representatives at the representative meeting, and you guys also, of course. Oh, okay, so there you go, so we're asking to amend that bylaw and add hazardous waste to it. And then, then the Article 1 would then read radioactive and hazardous waste substances, and then the following bullet point would be Amendment to 172-1 Prohibited Uses. And so basically, what we did was made some changes. We didn't keep collection and treatment in because we figured there's going to be some remediation and some extraction of PCBs, so you have to be able to collect it, and you have to be able to take the water out to do that, so we left that in, but added, but the rest of the bylaw is the same. I mean, we took those two out, the collection and treatment out, and we, the rest of the bylaw is the same, sorry for that. And so, that's what, why I'm here, and so the bylaw reads no land within any use district in the Town of Lee may be used for the storage, burial, incineration, or disposal of EPA classified radioactive and or hazardous waste substances, including but not limited to waste slash substances classified by EPA as low-level radioactive and or hazardous waste substance found on EPA website. And then we changed the definitions, well, we added hazardous waste substances to the definition, and I didn't put that in with the the bylaw change, because that can be found on EPA's website, and then we also provided some links for people to go to, so they can see what is considered hazardous. And then, if they wanted to go specifically to PCBs, they would go to two additional websites, so we're providing all the information, and we're hoping that this warrant can get onto the this article, get onto the town warrant that's coming up. Did submit the petition 35 days in advance, and I don't really see any reason why it can't be added, I know that you still have the ability to add articles to the warrant because you're the select board, and so I'm asking you to put this on for the representatives to vote on on May 13 to 2021. That's why I'm here tonight.
Could I just ask a question, Gail? So, is the article that Chris Britton just shared with us, is that correct the way you wanted it written?
Yes.
And it's a little different than what you actually submitted, right? The first time?
No, it's the same thing, yep, it's the same, I provided the same information. We just took out, we just we took out, no, let's see, what did we take out? Just trying to figure out what we took out, sorry, I might have been wrong about what we took out.
I got what you took out, I just wanted to know if it's in its form in what Chris said, if that's what you want on the warrant?
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Well, it's a, as far as I'm concerned, it's a petition, and we do have the time to put it on the warrant, so I would not be adverse to not putting it on the warrant, because we haven't even decided on what date we're having annual town meeting yet.
Oh, right, okay. That would be great, you know, it'd been, you know, I know that I'm really looking forward to just having the reps vote on this, that would be wonderful.
The only thing I would suggest is what we usually do anyways is we'll, we'll run it by Town Council to in case he has ramifications of why, or we couldn't do this, or we couldn't do that. You know.
Well, I know that, I know that you guys can let it go through, I mean, so that would be great.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it either, Gail, it seems like you're just tweaking some language at this point, and this would really just be for the reps to vote on.
Right. Dave?
Yes, Gail, yes, as long as it's in the timeframe, we pretty much can let it go, so.
Great, thank you. That'd be wonderful. Very excited about that.
Okay.
So...
There was a question about whether it was in the timeframe, but my understanding is it will work, so.
So do you vote, or is that the vote?
I don't think we have to vote to put it on, we've said we'll put it on.
Oh, okay.
And we have to put, I mean, unless we, the warrant was already printed and out and everything, we have to put a petition that's presented to us, as long as you got the signatures, on the warrant.
Oh, okay, great, thanks.
It's just a matter, it's just a matter of the town attorney looking at it and make sure it's viable and not going to hazard Town of Lee, so. With the language that's in it.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, it seems like it would be pretty good for Lee, but that's my opinion, I suppose.
You know, legal language is legal language, so.
Yeah, well, I pretty much had the same thing that was written there, I just added hazardous waste and you know, made it so anybody who wants to know what hazardous waste meant can go to the website, and that's something that's not even here, you know, they didn't used to do links, I don't think. You know, which is really helpful.
Okay.
Hey, wonderful, thank you, I'm very happy about that.
Thank you, Gail.
I'm not used to having so much success. All right.
Every once in a while, right?
Yeah, once in a while helps.
Well, you have a good night.
You too.
All right.
I'm going to stay and watch.
All right, all right, and the next thing. Veterans Memorial Discussion.
David, I asked that that be put on. I just wanted to bring everybody up to date on the request we had from Steve Broker a couple of weeks ago.
Yep.
While I subsequently found out that there's something going on right now with our veterans and Smitty, and naming of another bridge in town for the veterans, so I did call Steve, and I told him that, and I said I'd be in touch with him again to let him know what's going on, so we don't really have anything to discuss tonight, but I just thought I'd like to get it out there. And I did contact Smitty, and he said, yes, he was involved with that, so I'm going to get more information from him.
Do we know if that park has any name on it?
It, no, it does not. But I did contact Betty Leahy, and I got the details of why it's there and how it's there. It's just known as the Bradley Street Park, but the memorial that's there was put there on behalf of servicemen, well, servicemen and women who went to the Bradley Park School.
Really?
And so most of them lived, yeah, and they even had their own little bank account to upkeep it, has nothing to do with the town. They're just donations, you know.
God, that's got to be, 75 years old by now, or more, wow.
Betty said her Uncle Morris had something to do with that, so it's got to be 75 years or more.
Yeah, yeah, wow.
So anyways, we're just still exploring that, and I'll report back as soon as I hear something more definite.
Sounds good, so it's really nothing we need to do on this, so.
Right now.
Next, we have the Leek Mission update from Kathy Haw. Kathy online?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yep, here I am, hello, everybody. So I gave you both the business plan and the demographic profile two weeks ago, so they could look that over, and if you have some questions, feel free to ask me, I'll feel free to say, I know, or sorry, I'll have to find out for you, type of thing, but...
Yes, I'm sorry, I got the demographic went through that, but I don't believe I got a business plan.
I sent it to the Select Board.
I can get it from Cindy if she's got it.
I haven't seen it either, Pat.
Neither have I, sorry, Kathy.
I'm not making it crazy. It's okay, I can send it, yeah.
I've seen the demographics, but not the business plan, yeah.
So, because the business plan is, although it's a draft, it is very thorough in terms of what we need to find answers for, and then in terms of three different scenarios of how we would pay for this, or how many people we would need that would use the facility, and how much money they would have to pay in fees. So there's three different scenarios for that. And based on the demographics, the population, it seems that this might be feasible. In terms of the overall amount of money, anywhere from $12 million to $17 million, that's another story. We certainly would need the backing of the town for some of that money. We would certainly look for donors, and we're actually starting a list of donors, we went the Subcommittee of the Lee Youth Commission actually went to a workshop to find out how to pay for such a project. It was very, very helpful, so we've already started collecting names of donors. Then I just lost my train of thought. So, let's see what else was on there.
I would say, though, maybe you could check with Cindy to see if she got it, and if not, we send it to her?
Right, because at the last meeting, I sent it immediately to the Select Board. So I'll get that to you, so that we can discuss it. So um, I'll get that to you um, so that we can discuss it. Um, and within that plan, we always talk about the possibility of of putting this into different um, steps of construction of what would come first, second, and so on. Um, so we'll wait. Um, I do want you to know that we are working with a consultant, Brian Hallett from Pike Company in New York. He is doing some consultation for us free of charge, so um, he's also working with um, Matt Putten, who has done some of the engineering work for us and with Carrie Bartina, who's done some of the architectural stuff with us. So we'll hold this up.
Brian Hallett, who he is, what is his background? What is he, what is he consulting with you about?
Okay, um, the whole concept of that we have the conceptual idea of the building. He has the business plan and the demographic profile. So again, it's part of the feasibility. Um, is it feasible to have a building this size? Right now, he's talking with Matt and discussing that the this is done in different stages, which the subcommittee has already um, brought forth to the whole commission. Um, and we've agreed that it needs to be in several steps. Um, but that's as far as we we've gone with that.
I just wondered background.
Yeah, get in touch with you on that. In terms of the playground, South Lee's slides um, have been um, fixed. A company came in and did that work. Um, we are um, dealing with some of the idea of new equipment being considered to replace the swings that were destroyed in that big storm. On Bradley Street, we're measuring the area for new equipment being considered because the people of Bradley Street have asked that other things be added because it's kind of sparse out there. The land isn't very big, but there aren't that many um, playground equipment for the little kids. The athletic field, we had a little bit of cleanup um, this weekend with eighth grade stu- eleventh grade students. Um, the, some of the picnic tables that needed to be sanded were sanded. Um, they helped rake up the leaves by the fence, um, so it looks great. We had planned to paint those tables, however, the weather was not in our favor at that time. So that's all that I have for right now unless you have any questions.
Kathy, my concern is uh, very simple. I'm in the building industry and uh, product prices are up three hundred percent.
Right.
I could buy a two-by-four-eight for between three dollars and ninety cents and four dollars and fifteen cents a year ago. I now, I now pay nine dollars and sixty cents for it.
Right.
If you're gonna try to do a project at this point in time, you're paying three hundred percent more than you would at a different time.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the worth the bang for the buck for this community?
Well, would it behoove us to wait while prices go down for that lumber, for the wood that we need? Would construction go down or is it still gonna escalate?
Well, the other question is Kathy, can you even get the product? I can't get material most of the time.
Yeah.
You you have to wait for everything these days. I can't get shingles. I can't get dimensional lumber. They just don't have it.
Right.
And so we're we're always scrambling, trying to, you know, trying to find enough material from different suppliers just to get it and we're paying a premium. And so, you know, I understand your, this is your passion and I get it. But we're gonna pay a a very high premium and I don't even know when we get the material to do it.
Right, well, that could be part of the research that we do for the next meeting of the select board if we can get some information. Um, and yeah, I respect your input because you're in the business. We certainly are. Um, we do know that the prices have gone up. We do know that there is a demand for uh, this particular product. Um, but we'll, we'll just forge ahead and see. Again, the feasibility study isn't completed yet, so.
But you also, you can't hold the material price warrant two weeks anymore.
Okay.
Because the material goes up every two weeks.
Every time. Okay.
Yeah, that Kathy is definitely an added, an added uh, you know, thorn in your side, sort of, so to speak, with these building products and the increases that we're seeing because the, you know, the demand's there, but the supply isn't for a lot of different reasons and um, yeah, the the longer times and and all that.
Right.
That definitely doesn't help your case at this moment and you know, but things, things can change, so we'll kind of see what.
Yeah, things certainly can change and I'm I'm hopeful that it will, but I also know from past projects that the longer you wait, the higher, you know, the cost is um, for that that project, so um.
I don't think it possibly go higher anymore.
I know, I know.
I hope not.
Well, I'll have to go bankrupt and we don't want to see that, but anyways, you know, we'll just forge ahead and see what we come out with. And if it's doable, great, and if it's not, then, you know, we can wait for another time. No, nobody's saying that it needs to be done tomorrow. Um, we're just trying to do all the feasibility stuff that, excuse me, that we were charged to do.
Okay.
So, all right, but we'll be back in two weeks to talk again.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Have a good night.
Kathy.
Yes, oh.
Hey, you got something? Patty, you have something for Kathy?
I don't think so.
Guess not. All right, next we have a more memorial parade discussion.
Um, again, this is like a holdover from our last meeting. Um, I had Cindy check with um, Jim Willis at the Health Department to find out where we stand right now. And he said that right now, the governor is still not allowing uh, parades. A month from now, maybe he will, but they need to know fairly soon. You can't put it together the night before. So I would, I I guess I would suggest to you in all fairness to the veterans and the the people organized, yeah, organizers of the parade that we call it off again this this year, with the hopes that we'll be back to normal next year. And then the second part of that would be maybe the veterans would be willing to at least do what they did last year and we could have a small ceremony in the park and just do the important things like the readings and the the shooting and whatnot. I don't know what your thought is on that.
I I agree with you, Pat. Uh, it's still so far up in the air right now.
Right.
Um, you know, with the new vir- new variants of the virus and the rest of it, to try to put all those people up and down Main Street.
I know.
The congregation of kids and stuff. My daughter just had a problem with her school in Salem. They, a lot of them had COVID, so.
Yeah.
At at the moment, I just can't see how we do this.
Right, and I, you know, I think uh, last year, uh, CTSB filmed it.
Yep.
And I'm hoping that people took, you know, uh, were able to watch it at home. I think they're doing many, many more filming of things this year, so.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's too bad, but.
Yeah. I sent out a bunch of letters last year and a lot of business responded and uh, made up for what the Memorial Day. Well, they couldn't do the road toll last year and they were able to take a bunch of money in from these businesses that uh, weren't compensated for what they did, so. You know.
So.
But they can do the road toll this year, so.
Oh, yeah. So um, I just, I don't know, I, do you want me to follow through with this and check with um, Jim Curtin, you know, he's the commander?
Yeah, just uh, we could put a podium up in the park like we did last year and.
Yeah.
They can read the names and they get, I think they had six or seven guys there and.
Yeah.
It was a good, it was a good time, so.
Yeah, all right, I'll do that and then I'll I'll report back and let Chris know and he can let you people know. Uh, and I'll report back at the next meeting, but in all fairness, they're not gonna be able to pull it together, even if we, two weeks from now, if the governor lifts it, you know.
Right, no, I understand it.
Okay, I'll do that.
All right. Sean, do you have any?
No.
Okay. Uh, next we have a Berkshire gas permit for one-thirty Orchard Street. Uh, it was a class eleven leak repair. Uh, Cindy called me on this uh, this morning and I told her just let him go ahead and do it because the state had mandated they had to fix it because it was that bad of a leak, so we're just gonna vote for this nonparton.
Sounds good. I'll make a motion to uh, accept the uh, gas permit for the class-two leak repair at one-thirty Orchard Street.
I'll second that.
All who's in favor?
Pat Carlino, aye.
John Renia, aye.
David Conso, aye. Uh, we have no pending business. Town administrators got a twenty-twenty budget discussion and a town meeting discussion. Christopher, are you there?
Twenty-twenty-two.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm happy to report uh, in terms of the the budget uh, discussion that's on the agenda for tonight. This can be relatively short. The uh, the Finance Committee has moved uh, swiftly under the circumstances um, to uh, uh, meet with uh, the bulk, a- all of the larger department heads. And they're they're uh, following up on a, on a couple of uh, discrete appropriation items, but that that process is moving forward uh, relatively uh, swiftly. The uh, the amount of new information that that's coming in on the budget is not as profound, I think, in Lee as it is in 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 other towns that are affected uh, by other revenue sources that appear to be uh, fluctuating, which which is good, uh, means there's less uncertainty, I think, for Lee. Uh, so I I mean, I I'm anticipating uh, a uh, a a draft warrant article for your consideration that doesn't look substantially different from the budget documents you were uh, you were presented with um, you know, some time ago. Um, so I, that's the, that's the status on the, on the budget review thus far. Uh, we'll be scheduling a a capital outlet committee uh, meeting presumably in 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 May, depend depending on how the 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 next agenda item discussion goes. Um, and I I see Madam Moderator uh, is is in the, is in the meeting uh, a- as well for for that discussion. So uh, really, timing uh, as far as the budget goes, uh, hinges almost entirely on the town meeting calendar, which is what we'd be proposing to discuss next. So I'm happy to to uh, to answer any any questions about the budget uh, thus far. Uh, and then uh, perhaps move on to the ne- the next item, which is probably has as much influence over the budget as anything else.
Chris, have we figured out what uh, the federal government money that we got can be used for?
I I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Mr. Chair?
Have we figured out what the federal government money, the one-point-five million we got? What what is the ability to use that at?
Uh, we, we have not received any of the the guidance on the, on the rules for the use of that. Uh, you know, it is, it is reported, um, I I think fairly accurately uh, that because Berkshire County no longer has county government uh, as an institution, uh, that we'll be seeing a pass-through of uh, Lee's pro-rata share. A- a- as with the, you know, every town in in Berkshire County and other counties without um, without county government. Um, but the 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 guidelines uh, in the legislation haven't been translated uh, through the rulemaking process, at least not that I've seen it. But as soon as that changes, I I'll, I'll obviously be, uh, you know, the most interested in in in, you know, how how we're able to deploy those those uh, those stimulus resources and the mechanism by which we do that. But uh, there's nothing to report uh, as of yet.
Well, my second question is uh, the money we have from cannabis, the three-hundred thousand dollars, uh, is used to make community better. Uh, we're talking about a mill-and-fill project on Main Street. Can we use that money to use that? Does that be a public benefit?
Yes, that would be uh, a uh, a legally acceptable um, uh, resource. How- however, um, you you've, you've al- you've already um, committed funds towards Main Street. Um, so there's, there's an opportunity perhaps to do the work sooner rather than later. Um, if, you know, if if we're so inclined. Um, but the answer, the answer in either, in in either cases, yes.
Okay. Seems to me to be productive if we can use that money as it was intended rather than put it on the tax roll.
Right, in in both cases, yeah.
Okay. Patty, Sean?
Oh, all right.
No, I don't have any further questions.
That's our meeting discussion.
Yeah, so I think, I think uh, the bulk, the bulk of the budget process uh, will be driven by by this discussion we want to have right now. And I I'm glad to see that our honorable moderators joined us. Um, good to see you, uh, Ms. Wright.
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Hi, Sarah.
Nice, nice to see you all, too. It's been a while.
Our, our, our town clerk has prepared an option set, I I think, for how we might approach a town meeting. Um, you know, in terms of the 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 format. So I'll, I'll, I'll run through what 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 he's prepared. Uh, there's basically options A, B, C, and D. Uh, option, option A would be to uh, hold a regularly scheduled uh, town meeting on May thirteenth um, in the, in the auditorium um, and attempt to uh, uh, socially distance a hu- a maximum of a hundred and twenty-five people uh, in in that space. Um, that would be more or less the status quo uh, option. Option B would be uh, to hold a May thirteenth uh, town meeting in the, in the gymnasium, uh, which would uh, offer uh, some additional space, but uh, still continue to be indoors. Uh, option C would be uh, holding uh, the May thirteenth town meeting uh, using both rooms, similar to how we handled the annual town meeting that was postponed to October first of last year. And option D would be to postpone the annual town meeting to June twenty-fourth uh, and uh, utilize uh, outdoor uh, facilities, probably the the football field um, and make use of of the lights and and other amenities uh, during a reliably warmer weather uh, time of year, which one would argue, I think effectively, that early May is not. Uh, and then um, have a a a rain date. This is, this is a strategy that has uh, been the the chosen method in Stockbridge uh, already, and I suspect other towns will also follow suit. Not to put the cart ahead uh, in front of the horse, but I I think option D would qualify as as more or less the staff recommendation.
Eddie, Sean, you have anything?
Um, I, I'm definitely um, for the option D more so than the others. Um, yeah.
I don't mind B. Uh, we, we it says approximately a hundred public seats would be available on the gym, in the gymnasium. I don't know if that would be more trouble than it was last year where we used both um, both rooms. I don't, uh, I don't have a, I mean, I'm open to whatever everybody wants to do. Let me just see. I guess uh, well, A would be in the auditorium. B would be in the gymnas- so I guess I would do away with option A because I I socially distant sixty reps, sixty-five public. We might get more than sixty-five people there and then what what do we do? So to me, that's not really an option. Um, if we did it like that, then we would maybe do what we did last year and use both rooms, but um, I I'm also not against holding it on the football field later in the year. We've never done it before, but doesn't mean we can't try. Other towns are doing it. Um, I don't know how much work it would involve for staff and uh, but I don't know.
What what, one of the more compelling uh, aspects of uh, staff's recommendation for. What, what, one of the more compelling, uh, aspects of, uh, staff's recommendation for option D was that, uh, sta- staff presence as a resource, you know, so department heads who, uh, who often provide input where questions, uh, uh, come up would, would eat into that public participation, uh, quota. So, uh, that, that, uh, just puts further pressure on, uh, our ability to, uh, to, uh, safely distance, uh, members of the public who want to attend because while, while we, while we make the breakdown here between the, the representatives and the moderator and, uh, o- o- other officers, uh, you know, there is a fairly large staff, staff contingent
Right.
uh, that, that comes to answer questions, and that, that eats into the, the ability to accommodate additional members of the public, uh, in an indoor scenario.
Yeah.
Good.
David, what do you think?
Uh, my only question is, or my only problem is, you know, we went to town meetings so late last year. I hate to do that again, but I understand. You know, at least it won't be October.
Yeah.
It would be June, which is better. But, uh,
I know staff would like to see us have town meeting before the end of the fiscal year if we possibly can.
Yeah, I mean, last year was just, we, I mean, you know what we did?
Yeah, and then we had to vote every month and keep going like that.
And, and that's difficult, and I, and I get that.
Right.
So.
Uh, at least with option D, it does seem that the, um, we can utilize everything that's already there. Except rental chairs. I don't know.
I, I do think we can utilize, uh, gra- uh, CARES Act funds to execute the legislative process, um,
Right, we probably could.
I guess the only issue is the chairs that are at the school. Talking to, uh, Mr. Brigenti, I guess they don't work too well on the field with the metal chairs. Just get stuck into the field. So they were able to do the rentals for graduation last year, which worked fine.
Oh.
As long as they have a rail and not a post, it should be fine, yeah.
I think I, I kind of like to do that. The only thing I would suggest is, um, if we go with option D and we're going with, we've got a, a date of June twenty-fourth, and I see there's a, either a rain date of June twenty-fifth or the following Thursday, who knows? We might get three days of rain here. Maybe the, um, option would be to already assume that the rain date would be Friday, and if it's still raining, then, then rain date would be Thursday, July first. And if, you know, if it's the twenty-fourth and it doesn't rain, well, we're golden, but.
What is July first do for us, Christopher? We're, we're coming up fiscal.
Well, that's still close, but it's still within reason, not like October.
Yeah, and not, and I, I, I don't want the, uh, the tail to wag the dog here, um, where the board is setting dates, uh, to accommodate, you know, staff expediency. But i- i- it is, it is true that, uh, having an affirmative vote, certainly on the appropriations portion of the warrant, uh, would, uh, would, uh, make, uh, would, would, would make, uh, the, the financial operations of the town run more seamlessly prior to July one.
Now, there is the other, um, another option that's not listed here, and I don't want to throw a chink into the plans, but what if we had our meet, I believe we could change our meeting to have Saturday and have an all-day Saturday meeting.
Yeah, that was, I was gonna bring that up. I mean, it was, what, I think twelve, twelve-thirty maybe when we ended last year and
Right, and we still didn't get to a lot of those articles.
Right, there's, so there's, there's gonna be a lot of articles that weren't addressed last year that'll be in this year's. It might, yeah, it might, uh, make sense to, uh, have a, have a, I don't know, have a different scheduled time so that we're not starting it. I forget, what was it, si- six or seven?
I, I take with the, uh, I mean, I would just point out that with the lighting, um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't create too much of a, of a limitation, and you could, you could tailor the warrant such that, um, uh, you know, the, I, 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 it's my understanding that the planning board is already, um, contemplating, um, uh, uh, perhaps not submitting articles. Um, I, but, I mean, maybe that's something that, um, I can engage further with the, with the chair on.
But Chris, have you thought about what we're going to do with the articles that were from last year that we did not act on?
Well, the, um, the, re- really the articles that we didn't act on last year, um, were, were primarily capital-driven. Um, and, and tho- those are, I, I, I wouldn't say terribly con- controversial, especially in light of the fact that our, the town's cash, cash position is more favorable, uh, than it would be in a typical fiscal year. Um, to be honest, um, so the, uh, you know, mu- much of that is due to, uh, substantial, uh, intergovernmental, uh, assistance, uh, again, to be honest. The, um, not because, I mean, we did some, we did some important, uh, prudent things, but, um, you know, there, there was substantial aid coming from both the Commonwealth and, and the feds. So I, I, I think that, you know, there, there shouldn't be too much controversy, controversy around, uh, or time-consuming discussion around capital. I think people just want to get capital projects, uh, approved, uh, you know, in a normal fashion, and that, that, uh, shouldn't, uh, be altogether that time-consuming, especially after having been deferred for a year.
Well, I guess that's where I'm getting. I, are we gonna take care of them at this town meeting?
Yes, uh, I, I think, I think we have to. Um, uh, and because, because we have to, I don't think they'll be terribly controversial or time-consuming.
Okay. Alright, so.
And again, the town's cash position is more favorable, um, now than it was, you know, prior to the, to the onset of the pandemic. So there's no reason to defer them, uh, further, rather, whereas last year there was substantial uncertainty about, uh, the, the town's, uh, fiscal posture, uh, that frankly, uh, has been resolved.
Okay, so then we still have to consider what we're gonna do here. Anybody want to make a mo- well, let me ask you this, Chris. If we were to change it to a Saturday afternoon, twelve, twelve o'clock, how does that affect you?
Stay off.
Um, no, no such thing. The, um, the only, uh, the only thing that it would preclude is, uh, uh, the, the, the Saturday, you wouldn't be able to do the Saturday before because that is now a state holiday. Um, but, uh, that, that, there would be Juneteenth, uh, which is, uh, June nineteenth. Uh, the, uh, so that, uh, leaves you the twelfth, the twenty-sixth.
What if we started earlier in the evening, like at five?
Uh, that, that actually is a, is a great, that way you're, you're not in so much of the direct to sun at that time of year, uh, which, which, which was a concern in, uh, at least one neighboring jurisdiction last year.
So do you think by starting at five, though, uh, if it gets dark, the, the lighting will be enough that people will be able to see?
Uh, we would, we would utilize, I think, the, uh, the, the lights, um, uh, from the field if that were to become an issue.
I'm gonna assume that they can see to play football, they can see to make a vote.
Yeah.
Fine with me. I don't mind doing that. Um,
So what are we doing? I, I mean, the mi- the middle of the day might, I, I, I don't want to get too much into, you know, meteoro- meteorological prognostication, but middle of the day can be pretty intense, uh, with the, uh, with both the heat and the, uh, direct sun.
How many want to go outside, though? Let's put it that way. There's only three of us.
I don't.
Well, you, Chris Britton, Sarah.
Yeah, my, my feeling is, uh, we can go outside, but I, I, um, I would certainly support starting earlier before seven. And I would, so I would even say five would be better. Um, my main concern is, you know, it, it is meteorological, right? So I think it can get pretty cold, like later on, the, at once the sun goes down. So if we didn't start till seven, I think that just seems too late. Um, I could do five. I can do whatever time you want. Um, I, I, I do think there were a lot of other towns that last year did them Saturday mornings, like ten o'clock or so. Um, and they were, you know, they were done, you know, before lunch or shortly after lunch. But, um, I just don't know the logistics of the football fields. Like I was asking questions earlier today, like the bathroom and parking and, and these other things, you know, that, that I just want to make sure it's completely accessible and people feel comfortable, but it doesn't feel like a party or a picnic or, you know, something that it's not. Um, so whatever you all decide is fine. Um, and I guess lights and audio and all of that is there.
Yeah, luckily the school isn't too far away, so I think we would likely have the facilities at our use.
We could only put up porta potties as well.
That's true, that's true too, so.
Um, what about the, uh, going further down that? Just say we go with an outside. Um, did anybody see the, um, use of remote voting clickers?
No.
For each rep? Written down here, and I wondered what kind of interest there was in that.
Patty, I could speak a little bit to that if you'd like. Basically, that is just a, like a remote control that's got three options, either yes, no, or abstain. So we're able to add that right now. Current CARES Act money, uh, they could be used beyond this meeting. Certainly, if you know, last for a number of years, but it could record.
Record every vote.
So in an outdoor meeting.
An outdoor meeting, it may be a little less chaotic on a hand vote or standing vote.
Chris, it sounds like you're on a football field right now. They're echoing all the way through this.
Record by rep, so we
Rapwood.
Rapwood hit, um, recorded, he pulled in there, the whole record.
For our minutes.
What, what is the cost of this, Chris?
Uh, the, the whole system for our reps is, uh, twenty-seven hundred.
And that can come out of our grant money also, couldn't it?
Uh, yes, I believe so, I.
The COVID grant. Well, without hearing any further, um, issues or negativity, and don't be afraid to say it, I'm just gonna throw it out there that I would move, we'd look into option D of holding the meeting on the football field on June twenty-fourth, beginning at five P M. And we, um, use the remote voting clickers for each rep. And that will eliminate any problems of hearing also. As long as, I, I mean, I'm sure it is, Chris Britton, as long as, uh, town representative government can do that. I'm just thinking ahead. I don't know.
Yeah, I think, I think we're probably one of the only RTMs that hasn't used that yet, and it's mostly for the accountability reasons, the reps, um, you know, their vote is more accountable to their constituents there. So pretty much all of them have gone to this method. Um, the good part now is we're getting these under, you know, the CARES Act, and we'll be able to use them for, um, you know,
Right.
as long as they last, so.
And, I mean, the reps still has, have their paper, um, recordings that they fill out and leave at the end of each morn- at each meeting.
Yeah, we could certainly still do that. It would get recorded as well, on the system.
Okay. Anyways, I made the motion.
I'll, I'll, I would, uh, I would second the motion, Patty.
Any further discussion?
So if I understand it correctly, just because, uh, the town clerk and I want to, um,
Right.
want, want to make sure we get, we get this clear. What, what I heard was, um, that you're, you're, you're planning to, uh, to reschedule the date of the two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting, uh, under chapter thirty-nine, section nine, um, with the meeting to be held in, in or out, o- outdoors, um, at the, at the high school on July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, with, with the meeting beginning at five P M.
June. June.
Or, I'm sorry, June, 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 June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, beginning at five P M.
Now.
With a rain, with a rain date of, uh, July first.
No, or Friday, June twenty-fifth. How does that work with everybody?
Oh, that's right, that's right. I, 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 I think that's fine.
And if we should have a two-day rain, put the third one in there of July first. I'm just covering all bases.
Smart.
Well, I got, I got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
I have one hand up, Gail.
I'm just gonna say that it gets really hot by then typically, and I, I wouldn't be surprised if you might want to do it around June twelfth. Uh, it's up to you guys, but I think it gets really hot. It's up to you. I'm just, you know, considering that, I just, I mean, I know you're worried about being cold, but man, if you're frying, it's no fun either.
I feel, I mean, we're gonna have to take a, take a blow here one way or the other. If it's raining, it's gonna be hot or it's gonna be cold.
Only advantage to waiting, um, is the school ends, school ends on June eighteenth, so that wouldn't be any issues with, uh, with the school and classes and things like that. We would have pretty much the whole place available.
Are you gonna do?
Okay.
Are you doing it on Saturday or is that a Thursday?
June twenty-fourth?
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry.
June twenty-fourth is a Thursday. The rain date would be the, the, the next day, the Friday, and then
If it rains for two days in a row, then we gotta go to July one. How's that work?
Alright, again, I got a, a
Can we bring canopies? Can we bring, like, you know, those canopies like the sports kids sit under, you know, something like that?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Thank you. I'm done.
Okay, I got a motion to second. Is there any other discussion? Nope. All's in favor?
Pat Carlino, aye.
John Renia, aye.
David Consolati, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board, and Madam Moderator, and Mr. Clerk.
Alright, next we're up to public comments. Does anybody have anything to say?
I see no hands, Mr. Chair.
Well, oddly enough, I do. I, I understand this is a contentious time, but, uh, you know, we all need to be human here. Uh, I don't appreciate people pulling up my signs as much as I wouldn't appreciate people pulling up my competitors' signs. But what I really have a problem with is when someone walks into my house and terrifies my wife. It shouldn't happen, not now, not ever. And so I hope to God that, uh, the police find you before I do because I'm gonna be very upset. But it should never happen, ever. And that's all I have to say about it. So if there's nothing else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Oh. Next meeting?
Uh, I will give that uh, May fourth, two thousand twenty-one. I need your name for the motion to adjourn.
Pat Carlino, aye.
John Renia, aye.
David Consolati, aye.